Everybody, I'd like to call to order our regular town board meeting for September 8th. Would you please stand for the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Several announcements. The Highway Department will be holding a Household Hazardous Waste Day on October 4th, and you do need reservations, so please call the Highway Department at 876-6263. That's October 4th.
Actually, if there's a call, so reservation needs to be made with the county through Resource Recovery. Can I just state that number because that's the number to call for?
Thank you. The number to call for reservations is 463-6020. That's Dutchess County Resource Recovery Agency. They're handling the reservations. Thank you.
Thanks, Kathy. So, call Dutchess County at 463-6020 for Hazardous Waste Day on October 4th. Get rid of all of your old computers.
And there's a full list here of what's accepted and what's not accepted.
Thank you. In case people haven't seen, there's work going on Rhine Cliff Road. They're repaving, so expect delays. Allow yourself a little extra time if you're going to the train station through this week. That's the state DOT. Just an update on the Vandenberg Cove Sewer District manholes. I think at our August 11th meeting, it was reported that the manholes were paved over, and there was some speculation that our Highway Department could have paved them over. It is absolutely not true. The manholes were not paved over. Our Highway Department went out and identified them in about five minutes for our engineers. So, the manholes are there. They are exactly where they're supposed to be, and they're not paved over.
Elizabeth, let me mention in that connection, I am somewhat disappointed that our engineers didn't find them, didn't find the others. We had to vote $2,900 for a smoke test, and at least I'm disappointed.
Well, in their defense, don't forget that this was a very rushed thing.
Yes, no, I understand that we had no choice in it.
We were under pressure from the DEC. I am upset, too. I can read you an excerpt from them, and what they said was that their belief that three manholes that may have been paved over was based on a review of available sewer mapping, which was a copy of a copy and not altogether clear, and that their experience in other cities and towns where this has occurred was that they were paved over. So, it was a little rushed. They didn't have a clear copy. I agree. It's disappointing, but I just want to make clear that our Highway Department has not paved over any manhole.
Right, and some of them were, I think, in vegetation, not the three we're talking about, that they couldn't find. I guess they didn't go with a metal detector.
Well, the map really wasn't accurate.
The map that they didn't create wasn't accurate, is my belief as well. Town Hall will be closed this Wednesday from 12:30 to 2:00 for a Town Hall employee lunch to discuss efficiencies at Town Hall. So, Town Hall will be closed for an hour and a half this Wednesday from 12:30 to 2:00, where myself am going to be meeting with all the Town Hall employees to discuss efficiencies and work sharing and things that need to be done. Does anybody else have any other announcements? Oh, I have one other announcement. We need an alternate for the Planning Board. One of our Planning Board members is ill, and the Planning Board has requested that we find an alternate. This person would serve if someone is ill or unavailable to serve, so it wouldn't be a seat on the Planning Board, it would be a seat as an alternate, and we do have a law for that. Anybody else? Okay. Committee reports. I have the Cemetery Committee up first.
Hi there. Suzanne Kelly from the Cemetery Committee. So, I have about four things. Mickey's actually going to help out with some of these. The first item has to do with the situation of if someone has a conventional burial plot and they have a deed to a plot, and they want to instead have a natural burial plot, what's the difference that they need to pay for that? So, right now, the conventional plots are $1,000. The natural burial plots are $1,300, and our Cemetery Committee had decided that the difference would be $300. And so, I think we just needed to clarify that. And we based our decision on a number of different things. Do you want to explain part of this?
Can I just ask? I thought your recommendation was that we refund them the $1,300, not the $1,000. Conventional plot is $1,000, natural is 13. If somebody bought a plot years ago and they paid 800 for it, are you saying that we should refund them $1,000, 13, or the 800 that they paid?
I'm saying that they have to pay $300 more, not $500 more, because you're getting back a plot that's now worth $1,000, that you can now sell for $1,000.
So, you're recommending that we credit them for the full price of the conventional plot, no matter what they paid for it?
Yes. That's our recommendation, because the town's getting back that plot that they can then sell at the current price.
Do you want to take this point by point with us? I think would that be better? Or do you, since you have four points?
Oh, sure, sure. So, that's the first thing. I know we needed to discuss that.
Yeah, because someone has a deed that they'd like to turn in. There's someone who's been waiting for a long time.
Yeah, we need to make a decision about that. So, that was what our Cemetery Committee had decided. We met again last week because I knew this was coming up, and they just wanted me to reiterate that was our consensus, that that's our recommendation. So, you folks need to decide based on what we're recommending, what you think is the best thing to do.
Does anybody have any thoughts or feelings or questions about this? We do have a Rhinebeck couple. They've purchased a conventional plot, I think for six.
Eight fifty.
Eight fifty, and they're looking for a $1,000, a $2,000 credit instead of a $1,700 credit. Is that something that we're willing to do with the committee's recommendation?
I think this is a tough question. You know, if the plot is worth $1,000, and we can sell it for $1,000, they can sell it for $1,000.
Do we want to get in the business of everybody selling their plots? Do we want to get in the business of everybody selling their plots?
Well, I'm not sure why not. I've certainly seen advertisements in the paper over the years for cemetery plots. I'm not sure why we, in effect, give them a credit for what they paid, but the difference between what they paid and what the natural burial plot would be, maybe that's something we can charge for. Say, somebody paid $500, now it's 1,300. You give them a credit for the 500, and they pay the difference. That's the other way to go, but let's see what some of the other board members think about that.
Alan?
How good are our records about what people pay?
They're good, but I think, I believe they're on the deed.
They are on the deeds, and we have copies of the deeds.
So, I think it makes it pretty simple.
Elaine?
I have mixed feelings about it, which I did express to Suzanne. We've talked about it pretty extensively. My first question to her was, is this a deterrent right now for people to buy natural burial sites and the plots, the cost? And she said, no. So, my first reaction was, well, if they're not complaining about the cost, or it's not excessive to them, you know, I don't understand why it would be an issue. I understand where the Cemetery Committee is coming from, but then another part of me says, but those were the prices back then. You know, we didn't have a natural burial plot back then. We do have one now, and these are our prices now. So, I'm not sure why we would do that, although I do understand, I do understand the committee's reasoning behind it. I mean, if there was a natural burial site back then, they probably would have purchased it, but they didn't have a choice. So, now the cost has gone up, and it's almost like they're being penalized somehow.
But the, well, also, the other major point is that the town is getting back a plot, that they're then selling for $1,000. So, it's not like the town's losing any money. The town would actually be making money if you credited them, more or less, I'm confused, but if you charged them the $500 in this case, or the $450.
Yeah, so I'm mixed. I mean, I, you know.
Bruce?
I'm completely fine with the committee's recommendation, because the town has had the use of that money all that time, and we're getting, we're selling something for the, we're getting it back for the value, and it's in demand. So, I don't think we're going to lose any money, so I'm fine with exactly what they're recommending.
And I find myself in agreement with Bruce.
Alert the media. I'm kidding. Do we want to, can we make a decision on this tonight? We don't have a resolution, but there have been this couple, they've been, the deeds are in a folder for me to sign, and we haven't know, we haven't known what to charge them. So, based on the committee's recommendation, we're entertaining a resolution here. Can we do that, John?
Elizabeth, you haven't expressed your view.
I'm willing to take the committee's recommendation. I was torn by it, too. You know, I was like Elaine. I felt that if we refunded them more than what they paid, we would be losing money, but if it's an exchange, we're not really, you know.
Well, what the committee was actually a consensus, and they were really saying that this is actually, it's out of fairness, number one. It is a community situation where the people are buying it, but you're really getting, you're really getting all of your money back. I mean, you're going to get, instead of giving you $1,300 for the plot, they're giving you $300 cash and a $1,000 deed. There is no, it's the same amount of money you're going to get back. You're not losing anything on that deal. And the fact that, and you were right about that, Elaine, that the people, had there been a green burial cemetery, they would have bought it before. It simply wasn't available to them, and so the bargain is not going to be hurting the town at all. And I do want to say that the Cemetery Committee and the Friends also brought up, you really don't want to be putting people out that they've got to go selling these things on eBay. That is not really good for the town, as far as the image is concerned.
An economist, though, would say that although you're getting a plot back, what you're doing is foreclosing yourself from selling that plot for $1,000. You would get the $1,000 plus the difference. So, it's not, you know, we've got lots of plots available for sale. They're not all being used up, so there is a detriment to the town.
Well, I don't see it exactly the same way. However, I also like to say, we don't know, we haven't tested the waters whether these, there's not just, there are only two people you know, but I know a few other people are considering it as well, and I don't want to know if you want to put that up about, will they not buy them if we don't do it that way? Because I feel it's a little bit unfair to them that they have to, they paid what the plot was worth, and now it's worth $1,000. Yes, they can sell it for $1,000. Why should they give it to you for less? The consensus of the Cemetery Committee was to do it the way that Suzanne presented it.
And my opinion is that it's, all the mischief that we're all talking about is avoided by just giving people a credit and taking $300 for the difference and leaving it, you know, move on. Otherwise, you're going to have people mumbling around the.
Yeah. Can I make a motion to accept the Cemetery Committee's recommendation to allow exchanges for conventional plots purchased at the current selling rate of conventional plots if someone is purchasing a green burial plot? Motion. May I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? That's Joe, so moved. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, so I can sign.
That's great, that's great. I really appreciate it.
Sure. Thanks for coming and working it out with us. I know we've spoken, but it.
I'm glad I talked to my committee again. Actually, it was better because I could clarify things again.
Yeah, I sure didn't, I didn't understand it as well as it was explained.
Yeah, I don't think I explained it very well for the first time. Okay, so the second thing has to do, actually, with the Friends, and I haven't really reported much on the Friends lately, but we're in the process of putting together a couple of different programs, and I need permission of the town to pursue those programs, because obviously, the town owns the cemetery. The first one is the Friends would like to purchase street signs for the old section of the cemetery. There's actually, the roads actually have names, and we'd like to put up signs, and we have a plan to do that. We have a design for that. But there was some concern, because we discussed this with Kathy, about, you know, were there any regulations about signs in terms of the roads? And there were some. Do you want to talk, can you talk about this, Kathy? It'd be helpful.
Hi. The road through the cemetery is in a unique category. It's a private road open for public use. It's not a public road. It's not maintained by the town, Town Highway Department or the town. It is maintained privately through the cemetery, but it is open to all users. As such, it does need to meet the manual of uniform traffic control devices for anything that's put within the road right-of-way. Now, with this being a user road, it is not a dedicated road, it's a user road that's prescribed by use for the public. Therefore, the right-of-way is only really the traveled road bed and the immediately adjacent shoulder and any drainage, which I don't think falls into play in this particular case. So, as long as any signage was out of the, not immediately adjacent to the road and beyond just the shoulder area for safety clearance purposes, then it would not be subject to that. So, if they were set back enough, then those regulations would not come into play, and it would really just be informational signage for pedestrians and to identify areas of the cemetery.
Yeah, so what this means is, if it had to adhere to those rules, it would have to be a breakaway sign, it would have to have reflectors on it. We don't want to do all that. It's very costly. We just want to put up simple signs that are wood. Anyway, that's our plan, and it sounds like we can do that if we put them off the road, and so we'd just like permission to put them up. The Friends is paying for it.
Do you need our permission?
I think we do, yeah.
Can we get this on? Our next agenda, we'll do a resolution for this?
Great.
Is that okay?
That's fine.
Our next meeting agenda, we'll stop doing resolutions on the fly, and I'll.
But I don't have to come, right?
No, you don't.
Good.
Could you come on up?
I'm just curious, listening to this, what is the setback?
Could you introduce yourself?
I'm sorry, I'm Steve Sansola. I live in the Village. I'm just curious, what is the distance from the roadway? Does it prescribe it in the law, like the signs? Are they four foot off the shoulder, or?
As I said, it's the immediate road and the immediate adjacent shoulder for clearance area. There's not a prescribed exact number of footage. The headstones start at a certain point, and if they're in that line, that's off of the shoulder area, and that would be absolutely.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks, Steve.
Yeah, in that old section, there's a lot of room.
I'm sorry, I can't have cross-talking at the meeting. You can address the board. You have to get up and introduce yourself and speak.
My name's Atticus Lenigan. I'm from The Observer. I just need to know what the Friends is.
Oh, sure.
Thanks.
It's Friends of Rhinebeck Cemetery is a 501(c)(3) organization that's been set up, we were set up last year, to assist the town in beautification and education efforts in the cemetery, and we have a website, friendsofrhinebeckcemetery.org.
Thank you.
And then one other thing, two things.
So, we're going to, if John has any questions for the resolution, or he can get in touch with you, or I think we know what to do, but do you have a map for us or a site? Do you have something visually for us to approve?
I'll supply that for you.
That would be great.
And the design.
Thank you.
And this is another Friends matter, too, which I'll also give to you. Actually, I can use that. So, the town, actually, you may not know this, I'm not sure, we've put together a, the cemetery has been developing a greenscape plan, a tree planting plan for both sections. We have one in place for the grassmere section, and the Friends of Rhinebeck Cemetery has developed a tree plan of their own to help fulfill that greenscape plan. So, this is called Plant a Tree, Build an Arboretum. And so, we'll be, all we'll be doing is, we'll be raising money on our end, we'll be planting the trees on our end, we'll be doing all the work on our end, we'll be fulfilling the green plan that's been set up by the town. And so, I do think we need your permission, because we'll be planting on the town property to do that. So, yeah.
I think this is another resolution for, if that's okay. I'd prefer to do it.
That's fine.
With resolution so that they're written and.
But you would present the plan as to where the trees would go to the Town Board for approval?
Well, we, no, the town has the plan already.
We've approved that. We approved it last year, I think.
We have a greenscape plan for the grassmere section. We're working on one for the old section right now, and I'll be presenting that through the Cemetery Committee to you soon. All the Friends is doing is fulfilling the plan the town already has and will continue to develop, so.
Did you say there's a new plan for the old cemetery where trees will go?
Right, so the Town of Rhinebeck Cemetery Committee, because remember, I'm on both, that's why I'm standing here, is developing a second part of that greenscape plan. We have the grassmere section for the old part of the cemetery. It's not done yet, but I'll be presenting that soon.
Okay.
So, you're asking us for the permission for the Friends to fulfill the existing greens, to start working on it?
Yeah, not in, not in total. I fully expect that the town will still help with tree planting, but at least in part.
Okay. So, again, whatever information for the resolution. Thank you.
And lastly, this has to do with the cemetery accounts. So, I typed this up because it's kind of a big matter, and I figured it would be better if I just went ahead and wrote it out for you folks. Did you have a chance to read this?
I didn't. I only saw it today, so.
Okay, so I'll just explain what it is. So, I know that we had talked a few months ago about pursuing the status of these cemetery accounts, these trust fund accounts that were brought over when the town took over the cemetery in 2002. As you know, it used to be an association cemetery, which meant that it had, it was under the jurisdiction of the Division of Cemeteries, New York State Division of Cemeteries. As a municipal cemetery, we're no longer, we no longer have to abide by those laws. We can do essentially whatever we want, which is why we have those outstanding accounts that no money's been going into, because we don't take a percentage out of all of our, all of our plot sales and put them into these perpetual care and maintenance, perpetual care and permanent maintenance funds. But they were set up as trust fund accounts, and they're sort of in this murky area about the town hasn't known what to do for the past 12 years with this money. So, I pursued it. I spoke with three different attorneys at the Division of Cemeteries, and the, I had two final decisions by, two different final decisions by the same attorney, actually. They were verbal decisions, actually, Mickey was part of this as well. The last one was on June 3rd, and I stated there what his decision was. He, I asked him for a written decision. He said he would do that if someone from the Town Board actually wrote him, and Elaine wrote and followed up with that. And then he wrote back Elaine, I think maybe a month or two later, and said that he could not provide a written decision, because we're no longer under the jurisdiction of the state of New York, even though we've gotten three different opinions from the state of New York. So, we are at a loss, and he said that the only thing that we could do is pursue it with the Comptroller's Office or the Attorney General's Office. And so, you wrote the Comptroller's Office and.
Both.
You wrote both, and the Comptroller got back to you, I think it was the Comptroller.
The Comptroller got back to me first and said that we needed to go through our Town Attorney.
Right.
And then he had a specific set of criteria, though, that if the Town Attorney needed to contact him for questions.
Right.
He had to have some answers first before he could ask him questions.
Right.
Essentially.
Right, and so I was going to follow up with that, but there's a, there's a little bit of confusion in terms of me following up with Warren about things.
You can't follow up with Warren, Elaine. It would be, I think our Town Board members work with attorneys, and the Town Board does. Otherwise, all committee members would be running up attorney bills.
Right.
Well, I did do that, though.
Yeah, you did.
I did contact Warren after we got the response from the Attorney General's Office and asked him if he would please look into this.
Okay, good.
Yeah.
But he didn't, he doesn't understand the scope of it. He really doesn't understand what the issue is. So, what needs to happen is you can provide him with this letter. What I'm asking him, this letter is for the Town Board to now pursue it.
Well, how the Town Board pursues it, I think Elaine, as your liaison, would meet with Warren, and it's a puzzle. It has to be on.
Well, really, though, Suzanne's the person who really needs to meet with Warren, because she has all the facts and details from this whole time period.
I might need to do it with you. I'm just thinking that the narrative.
That's fine if we do it together, but you definitely need to be there, because you're going to have a lot of facts and information that I don't.
Yeah.
So, we, the three of us can do it. That's fine with me. We'll just have to sync our schedules, because I work until 5:00.
It might be easier that way, I'm thinking.
Sure, sure. We can do it that way.
Or even a phone call or something.
Yeah, we can do that that way, too. That's fine.
We have a two-hour allotment that you can spend on this without coming to the whole board for approval.
Okay.
Okay, so that's what I was, I didn't know about that either.
Yeah.
We were, I was trying to avoid this, so, because I'm concerned that it's.
Thank you for doing all this work. It's confusing, because as you know, the association, non-association trust funds, so he'll have to work it out.
But from what, from what the attorney did tell me up there, it does sound like if they come to the same decision, that we will have access to these funds as long as they're used for the purposes for which they were intended, or some portion of these funds.
Do we have to, do we know if we have to dissolve the trust funds and create another fund, or?
No.
Okay.
I don't know anything.
Sounds like that would be good.
I don't, I don't, I don't know anything. No, I don't think that, they won't have to be turned into other trust funds. I think it's a matter of access or no access.
Okay.
You've gotten four different answers. It's hard to know anything.
Yeah.
What did you say, Alan?
Suzanne, let me ask you this. Is the committee checking what our charges are versus other cemeteries? Because at least, certainly, cemeteries closer to the city, plots are a lot more expensive than here, and they do have perpetual care funds that come in, and.
Right, so, so we did a, we did a study, we did our own mini-study last year, where we looked at cemeteries in the area to see what people were charging, and we sort of, we raised our prices last year, and we raised them based on that, based on our research. So, we decided we wanted to go somewhere in the middle. There are cemeteries in our, in our vicinity, you know, 50-mile vicinity that charge $500, a lot of them, the smaller cemeteries do. There are some that charge more, way more, like the Poughkeepsie Rural Cemetery, but they're entirely different kind of cemetery than we are. So, yeah, we did.
Something we should periodically follow up. Ideally, it would be nice if the cemetery were self-supporting.
Okay, so, thank you. You and Elaine will meet with Warren. You have a two-hour time limit that you could spend without further board approval, and hopefully, he can give you some guidance.
Sure, yep.
He has two hours to spend on this.
Yes, I understand, okay.
Okay.
Anything else?
That's it.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Any other committee reports?
You asking for liaison reports?
Committee liaison, we'll take it off.
Okay, because I do have some, and actually, I'm glad Suzanne's still here, because she'll want to hear this, because I finally heard back. Okay, so another thing related to the cemetery is the issue of the stone wall. Well, there's two issues with the stone wall. The only issue I'm bringing here right now is that there was storm damage to part of the stone wall on the Mill Street side, Mill roadside, rather. And so, I contacted our insurance company to find out whether they covered this kind of storm damage, and if so, is there a deductible, and would it affect our rates? Those were the questions I asked. And so, I heard back from them, and they said that, yes, our cemetery is covered. They said that our deductible is $2,500, and that the submitting a claim would not increase the rate, and they said that if we do want to submit a claim, we need to get an estimate. So, I've been in touch with Gary. I met with Gary the other day, and I've spoken with Bobby, and Bobby is going to get three estimates from stonemasons for the storm wall, for the, for the stone wall. The question to the board is, do we want to submit a claim for this? Yes.
I would say so to NYMAR, yeah. I mean, that's my opinion.
Yeah, I agree, if we can.
Well, if it's less than $2,500, a little bit, it's silly to put.[1681.13] Well, if it's less than $2,500, a little bit, it's silly to put a claim...
It's gonna be a lot more than that.
What?
It's gonna be a lot more than that.
Oh, okay. Whatever it is, but if we're over the deductible, yeah.
Okay.
That's why we have insurance.
That's why we have insurance.
Yep, so, yeah, good.
Thank you, good work.
Yes, you're welcome. Perfect, so, okay, I'll follow up with that, then. I have a few different updates. Okay, the animal control, did everybody have in their box the...
Yes.
Sheet from Bobby that he delivered today with the estimates? Now, I just wanna draw your attention to the fact that the estimate we see here, the $10,300, is only to raise a structure, whether it's the existing structure or a new structure. It's only the cost of raising the structure. So, if we wanted to go with a new building on top of this $10,300, Bobby said we'd wanna add about another $5,000 for a new building. He has no idea right now what would happen if he picked up the old building. There's rot, it's been, I mean, there's so much wrong with that kennel. I mean, my personal feeling is that we should just replace it completely. But if he lifts it up and it starts to, you know, fall apart, you know, none of that's covered in here. So if the board decided to keep the existing structure and lift it, and that happened, we'd have a whole nother expense on our hands, just to keep that in mind. So this is Bobby's most recent estimate. So I guess I'm wondering, you know, we need to do something about this soon, especially because we're going into the cold weather months again, and the kennel's been a problem for a long time, and I can't stress enough how much I feel like when the rain ends up in there and those dogs have to go up on their hind legs, to me, that really borders animal cruelty, and we've gotta do something to help the animals in that situation. So I think we need to make a decision soon about what to do with this kennel, we've been discussing it for a few months. We have estimates now.
The estimate is to raise it in place?
This is just to raise it.
Yeah, I mean, but it's gonna be in the same spot.
Right, it would be the same spot, just raised.
Kathy, could, the kennel is housed on the grounds of the Highway Department. Why can't we move the kennel?
The only other locations that it could be moved to is really immediately adjacent to where it is, which may be higher land for now, if you wanted to make that move, but you would have the expense of moving the kennel, which would probably offset some of the other savings.
What about between the two buildings?
That's the usable space.
Set slightly back.
That's really, there are two items there. First of all, that is the only space that we have for any storage, or if there was ever going to be any connection between the two buildings for future use, if anything was happening, that space needs to be there. Plus, there's also discussion of an adjacent, immediately adjacent to that area, set back, trail space for eventually, if there was a easement to Winnicky Land Trust.
Is there an easement?
They were talking about that. There's not one in place now, no, but it's always been, plus, I think that that's an extremely, I don't think that's an appropriate area for the dogs due to the activity level that takes place there, but the stress, I mean, there's constant machinery, equipment, and back and forth right there. It is a used space, it's not really appropriate.
Right now, they're situated right near gravel piles, so that's a high-use area as well.
Not as high-use as between the two buildings. That's just constant traffic, back and forth, movement of equipment, loading, unloading, I mean, every single day. Again, I do not think it's an appropriate space.
I guess, my own view is that we have lots of projects, and this is one of a number of projects. We have a pump, I'm told, that we have to get at the pool, which will cost us at least $5,000. We have the dog project. We have a group is, some people are asking for repaving of the tennis court and ball fields, which would be $30,000 to $40,000. We have the...
What ball fields?
I'm sorry, the tennis courts and the basketball. We have the furnace project, which we don't really know how much that's gonna cost. And we have the steps for the town hall, where we'll have the bids on this week, on Friday. So we really got a lot of competing projects here that are asking for money, and I think we gotta weigh the things, and I think we gotta do it probably in the context of the budget, because if we gotta raise money to fund these things, that will affect the budget. I had suggested to our supervisor, as you speak to the town of Red Hook, as to whether they have any interest in coming in with us. I think you've had some discussions with Red Hook. And with respect to the dogs, although the estimate's about $10,000, that includes us providing the labor. If Bobby works on that, that means that he won't be able to do other things, and I don't know what other projects that will take him away from. I know we've been talking about moving the files out of the Highway Department now for two years, up to Transfer Station. So I think we got a lot of things to weigh, and we shouldn't be talking about one project without the context of all of them. So I do think that the budget workshops are an appropriate thing to weigh which ones we feel we have to do first, second, third, et cetera.
Is there an alternate for housing the dogs? Can we condemn the building and house them someplace else until we are able to build a new building? Because I agree, I don't wanna see them...
I don't know where they would be housed. I really don't know where they'd be housed.
I did talk to Sue Crane, the supervisor of Red Hook, about this, and they're interested in talking about, you know, sharing animal control. We're very happy with our current animal control officer, Roger Newkirk, so he's available in the evenings, maybe we could share with them someone during the day and look at housing. They currently house their dogs with a local vet for very little.
And the town, and the town, they use our kennel, too.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And if the dogs are unruly, yeah.
Right.
So, they're open to discussion, but they don't have a solution for us. I don't wanna see the dogs go through another winter, I don't think we can house dogs there.
No, I was going to say that, I was gonna say two things. Bobby said that it would take him about a couple of weeks before he'd be able to get to the work on the kennels, which I don't think is a bad estimate. I don't think we can go through the winter without doing something. I mean, it's horrible, the conditions there for the animals, it's horrible. The fencing outside is rotting, you know, something really does have to be done. I mean, I understand and I agree with you that when you have multiple projects, you have to consider them all, but what happens when something has to be done? I mean, you have to fix it, you can't ignore it.
This is the...
This has been a problem for a long time.
We need to finish our, and we have to push for this as soon as the, you know, we have to finish our capital replacement plan, because this is what happens if you're not planning for it, it isn't done. And it's been how long since this kennel was built and taken care of? What did we say, 30 years or something, 25 years? Bruce, is there another place where we could locate the kennel that makes sense to you?
Put it in my backyard.
It's nice up here.
I mean, in the interim, Rhinebeck Animal Hospital, I understood, has agreed to...
Yeah, but if there's an animal that's unfriendly, they won't take it. The vets won't take any, like vicious or unfriendly animals. Roger does, he takes them all. So, yeah, I mean, we've been this route, that's the thing, like, we've exhausted, you know, our resources, really.
And you need a place that's got some kind of people moving in and out on a regular basis.
Yeah, they can't be isolated off in the woods, no.
And the noise around here wouldn't work, the yapping.
I've had extensive discussions with the animal hospital, and the bottom line is, yeah, they would take the dogs, but they think that we're wasting our money by not having our own kennel. They have looked at the kennel, they don't think it's so terrible, that it's dire, I don't know.
Well, they're the only one out of...
Let me finish, like, you know, heat in the town hall is a pressing thing. You yourself indicated that when you were here yesterday, heat was on and it was very hot, our employees here...
We have a problem that we have to fix. Unfortunately, it's an infrastructure breakdown. Animals can't stay there, they're gonna drown, the fence doesn't contain them. Is it up to us, Kathy, or up to you, how the land at the Highway Department's used? Can we come down there? Can we look? I just think where it's sited now, it's problematic. We're never gonna be able to fix that grade, and we're always gonna be finding water. I'd rather find another place there that could be used. I think that would help us.
Well, I think you've been on site, you've looked, and I, again, all I can say is my, you asked for my opinion on this, and my opinion on this is that the only space down there at the Highway Department that can be used is either the space that it's on or immediately adjacent, which is slightly higher ground. My position on that, that's my position on that. I, you know, I'd have a dog kennel down, you know, I'm usually loud enough without it.
But, you know, I think it's great that the dog kennel is on the Highway Department grounds. I think it's really good because there's a certain security there for the dogs because there is activity, they're observed, we know if there's a problem, we can get in touch with Roger or a vet. There's been issues in the past where there was a potential flooding issue, and we were able to get dogs out of there because we noticed it and we're on-site. Some, you know, the dogs do get attention, we've actually, because we know they're there as well, several of the Highway Department personnel have been instrumental in getting dogs adopted out of there. So, I mean, there are a lot of real pros to having it on the grounds. But there is a limited amount of space at the Highway Department, and we are a Highway Department, and we need to use our space for that. The area that you're referring to, again, my strong position on that is it's not an appropriate space. I think it's overstimulating for the dogs, I don't think it's good for the dogs, I don't think it would be helpful to us in our daily needs. I think either where it is or immediately adjacent, which is slightly higher ground, and that's something that Joe had looked at, are the two possible locations there. They each have a separate set of challenges. So, those are the two positions down there. You're welcome to come, look around, I'll show you around, that's no problem, but believe me, I've looked at this, I was just looking back through the file that I have here, and I think we first had discussions about, you know, were there any other appropriate places there in 20, I'm trying to look, it was when Gina was still on the board, I mean, it's going back to 2010, we've been looking for any other spaces, and they just can't make them exist if they don't, and they don't.
You can't make more land?
I can't, I don't know who could do that. A volcano, maybe.
One other question, Elaine, have we looked into buying the prefabricated kennels?
I think the estimate, the first estimate that Bobby gave, which unfortunately I don't have in front of me, that $5,000 would have been a prefabricated kennel.
I mean, I'm in favor of doing this. We don't have a resolution for tonight. If you'd like to put one together for the next meeting...
I would, sure, I will.
I don't know, you know, we know how Joe feels, I don't know, Bruce, if you wanna weigh in, if you have any other ideas. I don't wanna see the animals going through another winter, storm season.
And this has been going on for a long time. I mean, it's time we do something, we can't keep ignoring it.
It's 30 years that we haven't done anything with the kennel.
Right.
Let me just say that on the flooding, my understanding is it's a problem with the snow runoff, and that it may be the month of April, but it's not, you know, I think we're probably exaggerating the flooding problem, and if the way the snow is piled up at the Highway Department really causes a problem for a particular period of time, we can always put the dog in the animal hospital.
Joe, that's just not, it's not just the snow, it's the rain. When I went down there the first time and looked, I mean, there are huge water stains from where this is a continuing problem. Dogs have been up on their hind legs, it happens in the rain, it happens in the snow. It's not being exaggerated, this has been an ongoing problem for a long time, it's the recommendation of the animal control officer, who's been there for a very long time, and he's a frugal man. I mean, it's a problem, and I mean, I would invite anybody from the public to go down and check out those kennels and come back to us with input and tell us if they don't think that's a problem.
Alan, what are your thoughts?
I'm inclined to wait a while, I don't think it's gonna be a problem until the end of the year, anyway. We're not gonna see snow, and it's been raining a lot and it hasn't flooded over the summer.
It did flood.
When?
I'll have to find out from Roger, but it has flooded more than once. This is a serious problem, I mean, maybe you could have a talk with Roger about it, and he can fill you in, that would be helpful, because I personally don't think it can wait until the end of the year. I mean, it's the wintertime, the dogs are gonna go in again, like...
The budget workshops are in the next few weeks, right?
Yeah, but the budget won't be decided till later.
Well...
But at least we'll have an idea of what we're gonna be spending, and then we can put this spending in the context of the bigger picture. It's a little hard to keep spending without knowing where we're going.
I would put a resolution together for the proposal, and we'll either table it until we get to the budget sessions, which will be October, you know, so we should, if we're buying a prefabricated barn, we should be able to do it and plunk it down before the snows come.
Can I ask you, Alan, have you seen it? Have you gone down?
Yeah.
Oh, you have gone down to take a look at it, okay, good.
Elaine, I've looked at it, too. I'm up in the air on it. The only thing I don't understand is why don't we divert the water? Why don't we put a trench around it of some sort to divert the water and as a step, and then do all the repairs that we need to do, rather than all this other stuff? That's what I don't understand.
Because in some cases, it might be beyond repair, like, when we went to look at it...
But wait, wait, the first thing was, why don't we divert the water? Why don't we figure out if we need to put a ditch, a moat, a river? I don't know.
I think we did that.
There is a French drain.
I know, but I'm saying something bigger, we talked about it when I was down there, a berm around that with a fence, so people don't walk into the ditch, you know, a two- or three-foot ditch that diverts it around both sides, and you'd have to put a little bridge across where you go in the door. But if it's that level of water, that sounds like what it would do. If it's coming up from the stream, then that's a different issue. But if it's coming off the parking lot, that makes sense to me.
The water from the stream was a two-time event in extraordinary circumstances during Irene and Lee, that the water was raising and dogs needed to be evacuated there because of the rising level of the stream. That is generally not the issue, and as in all things for the town, we have problems with these superstorms that hit us, and we usually, engineering advises you can't build to the most extreme. So to keep that in mind, the different water issues that are there, rising stream versus the runoff. The runoff, everybody keeps saying it's the snow, it's actually, it's because of the salt that there's runoff there, because there's always going to be an area of melt, because it's catty-corner, if you will, to where we load our trucks. So there's always going to be salt in that general area, so there's always going to be a higher degree of melt in that general area, so there'll be runoff going down that way. We have tried to divert it a couple of times, not to the extent that you're talking about, Bruce, in the front, but we have done temporary diversions, and again, they have worked temporarily. But I think what has to happen there is, one of the things, is the air, either the building needs to be raised, which brings us back to the proposal that Elaine is bringing forth, and the area needs to be filled and brought back up to grade so that there's something there. As Elizabeth pointed out, and I'm sorry, I don't remember the numbers, 20 years since something's been done there with there? So it took 20 years of erosion for this to happen and become a problem to this degree, or almost 20 years, only been in the last two, three years that this has really been that bad. So, yeah, I mean, obviously, after 20 years of no attention, something does have to happen. If you're looking for alternatives, such as Bruce is bringing forth, I think that's, you know, certainly should be looked at, but I think that it may have been looked at. I believe that Elaine, as the liaison there, actually had these conversations with Bobby, who was our Buildings and Maintenance Superintendent, I think that's the title, he brought forth a proposal. So I think that's what's in front of it. You've asked your maintenance department to look at this and make a recommendation, and that's the recommendation that that person came up with, your professional on staff. So, I think, you know, a lot of it's going around in circles, and believe you me...
You're right, we have a recommendation.
I understand the challenges.
We follow it or we don't, and I'd like to see a reso with all the costs in it, and this board can either vote it, vote for it, or vote it down, but, you know, I don't wanna see the animals going through another year.
That's a very difficult thing to put us in, because if we say we want to look at something that's cheaper to do, potentially cheaper, that's just as effective, and we don't vote for the resolution that's been, the solution that's been put forward, then we don't like animals, we're dog lovers.
No, no, you can come up with another solution, we've been talking about this for two years.
We just, I just offered one simple one, and basically what was said was, that isn't what was offered, so we're not considering it.
Because I think...
Because I thought that you, I thought that you, as the board debating this, had your person looked at this.
No, no, no.
Because they haven't looked at it, then it shouldn't be looked at.
I've told, I have told Mr. Fitzpatrick, and he's given me a price on that, I have told him to estimate that, and he's given me a price. I told him to include it with what he turned in, and he didn't. So, that's a different issue, but that has been on the table.
I think, let me, before, let's just wrap this up and move on, I think we're...
How did I say?
Let me finish. We're, you know, I think if you worked with Elaine and we put that in the resolution to do regrading and the building, there's nothing more, we're beating this to death. We either move the dogs, have them taken care of by someone else, or we look at the look at the money during the budget process and get this done.
Well, I will go back to Bobby and ask him. I was not aware that you asked him to include that in this estimate, so I would be more than happy to go back to Bobby.
Thank you.
And ask him for that total, too, and bring that back at the next meeting. Yes, of course, you're welcome.
Any new comments? A new comment?
Yes, a new comment, Elizabeth, a new comment. An, a joint project with Redhook, I think would be ideal for a grant application from the county. And if Bruce's berm buys us a year, and it's not expensive, it may be worthwhile. I'm not sure ultimately if that really is the solution. But, as you know, the county is really pushing shared services, and if Redhook would go in with us in a grant application, I think we would have a good chance of getting something like that.
Thank you.
The other thing is, I have a friend who's used to breed dogs, who has a kennel on a, on a high hill, actually, that is not being used. That could be used for an unruly dog that couldn't go to the, you know, we had only one. I'll have to call and see if it's available.
Thank you. Anything further on dogs? Any other liaison reports? Elaine, more stuff?
Yeah, I have, yeah, too, sorry.
And then everybody, anybody else?
It's the mother lode for me, but I'm done after this one, so, at least for a little while, so we get to the resolutions. So, the Rhine Cliff Waterfront, a few meetings back, we talked about a member item that was given to the town of Rhinebeck in the form of a grant under former Senator Salib, Steve Salan's administration. Out of the $28,000 that we were granted, we spent all but $2,227 of that money. So, our, we, we used the funds for what we had asked for it at the time, and so our question to the state was, can we now reappropriate this for something else? And it's a relatively small amount of money, so where would it be best used? And the waterfront committee has been asking for signs for the Rhine Cliff Waterfront, because there's nothing in Rhine Cliff or Rhinebeck directing people to the waterfront. So, the board had approved that motion back a few meetings ago, and so we have been working with the state ever since to get, to be able to use the $2,000. So, we, we passed our first hurdle, the Senate passed it and said, yes, you know, you can do this. They moved it forward to the Department of State, and I am now working on the application. I have it almost complete. The only thing that I need now is to receive back the estimates from the three sign companies. I've received one so far.
Great.
For the signage, and then I need to have a discussion with Kathy about the signs, to find out where they could be located, and what would be permissible, and...
I have one, excuse me, I have one comment. I think we need to also make the public aware that this could happen, especially Rhine Cliff.
Uh huh.
So, if we post it...
Sure.
In the Morton Library, that we're considering this with your, your map, which I think you had a more legible copy.
Yes, yes, I had it, yep.
Kathy?
Yes, I did. Elaine, I got what you sent me, and I did not have a chance to review that yet, but from just the very quick glance that I gave it, I believe that some of the signage looks like it would be on the state portion of Rhine Cliff Road before it actually turns into Charles. And I think if you have something on the other side, it actually may be on the county road as well. So, you would absolutely, if you're looking at putting anything in the right of ways that are controlled by those entities, you would need them in the loop and their permission, which is actually a much more intense process. So, I, we will talk about that, though.
Can you give us a recommendation for just keeping the signage on town roads?
I, again, I haven't looked at that closely enough. I just did a quick preliminary glance of that. The other is, I do want to echo what Elizabeth said. I, I think that it's great that the waterfront committee is putting work into that and coming up with something, but I think signage along roads, particularly in Rhine Cliff, I mean, everywhere in town, there are people who get very concerned with additional signage as visual pollution, and there's always the concern that the more signs you put up, the less impact individual signs have for warnings, which they're intended to be traffic control devices. So, I, and I think Rhine Cliff is particularly sensitive to this. So, I, I think that there needs to be a lot of outreach before you come forward, because I think you may find that there will be more public discourse than you would have anticipated on this.
Thank you. So, maybe you and I can talk, once you have a chance to look at that, and then, once I know the plan, I can take it to the town, and, okay, great, thanks very much.
Thank you.
Yeah, you're welcome.
Bruce, committee liaison?
The boiler specs and everything, all the front-end matters for the bids will be available next Friday. The DEC has just been spotted in the landfill, so we're under the, they're looking at us on a lot of things, so.
Bruce, you're saying a week from Friday?
Yeah.
The bids?
Not, not the bids, the spec for the bids.
Oh, the specs for the bids.
Right.
Also, you want to, the Vandenberg Cove announcement, do you want to?
You want to talk about that, or do you want me to?
If you'd like to.
Elizabeth and I met with the county...
Gentlemen, all four gentlemen, ladies are...
I don't like those things. Elizabeth and I met with the county folks that take, manage the wastewater and drinking water systems in the county, and we spoke with them about the possibility of taking over the Vandenberg Cove sewer system, and Elizabeth asked the head of that to come at the next meeting and talk to the, take us through the possibilities of what we would have to do, and the process, and so on. I've let the committee chairs know about it, and asked them to inform their neighbors down in the cove, because it's going to be a big thing. The reports that we were required to turn in to DEC got there on time. We're waiting for the engineer to follow up with whether we were well-received or not, but it was a technical report. So, so we're doing what we're supposed to be doing.
Thank you.
Can you?
Just to reiterate, Bridget Barkley will be here at our next meeting to discuss possible takeover of the Vandenberg Cove Sewer District by the County Water and Wastewater Committee.
Bruce, this report that went in, what was the gist of it? Can you tell us? Did they see problems, no problems?
It was the smoke test results, it was the, the fact that the flow meters were unseated, it was the fact that the outlets, two of the outlets were below high water marks, potentially. So, those things, but primarily, what it said was, if we have no rainfall, no water, not, the system is dry, and the flow meters are reading two gallons per minute, there's something fundamentally wrong. And, so that, that's the, I think, the meat of, of what was sent back in. We, they've, they've said what we would do, where we have any uncapped inspection holes, where we have a couple of manholes that have decayed tops. There's a couple other ones where there's no footer in the, in the manholes. Those were supposed to have been fixed before. What happens is the water leaches up from, from the groundwater, right, into the bottom. So, those were all in there as possibilities. But right now, it's, it's go slow, fix the quick stuff, especially the flow meters, keep the expense down, and make sure we don't really have a problem.
Excuse me, Joe, did you not get a copy of the engineering report?
No, I didn't. I, I, as far as I know, I didn't. It could be my box.
I think it was emailed to everybody, but I'll make sure that you...
Did the rest of us get it? Elaine, did you get it?
I don't recall seeing it, actually.
Alan, you remember seeing it? I don't think we got it.
No, I don't remember. I saw it, but I don't remember who saw it.
Yeah, it may have been addressed to you.
I'll make sure that you, that you all get it. It's meaty.
We like those kind of reports.
Right, we know how to read.
Anything else, Bruce?
No.
I'll report on a couple things. One is the town website. You were approached by, I forget the name of the company now, with a proposal to host our website, host the town website, and convert it, convert what we have over to that, including the new version.
Yes.
You and the, and the town clerk, and the assistant town clerk, and so on, the people in the town hall that were responsible for updating the website, looked at the tools, liked them, and so we've decided that's where we're going to go. The expenses were relatively low.
And the tech committee, the web committee has recommended that we do this. We have the money in the budget, and I think we can just put it on the next budget transfer, and hopefully move to do it.
It was around $1,000 for the whole year.
Yes, yep.
Secondly, the, the repopulation of all the computer equipment in town hall is proceeding. We've got new workstations in each of the offices in town hall, and people are using them. There are some requests for additional screens, or to change, or change this, that, or the other thing. Basically, all the data that the town uses will be on the servers. The servers are sitting behind this curtain in a, in a screened-in room, so it's secure. All the data that's, that's collected is also backed up on the web, to a secure site on the web that does backups. So, we're, we're in much better shape from a security point of view than we've ever been. One of the advantages of the approach we've taken is that there's no data on anybody's desktop, and people really don't have PCs anymore. They have, in essence, workstations that communicate with the, with the computers that are centrally located in the...
Central server.
Cage here. The downside of that is people can't play Solitaire anymore, and, you know, they can't, they can't keep their shopping list and all that. Well, they can, but they're not, there's a limit to how much people can do personal things now, and some of the folks in town hall complained about that.
This is our tech grant from the county, and we're, it's great that we're getting it implemented.
The intermunicipal agreement between the town and the village, let me back up a second. Part of the deal was, we're going to serve the village computing needs as well, and there's a legal agreement between the village and the town that the town attorney's been preparing. That's, should be ready any minute now. But basically, what's going to happen is there'll be a fiber link between this building and their building, and their, their workstations will be configured like ours, and these, the servers in this building will basically provide service for both buildings. Again, the county paid for that. We're still doing tuning. There's a few growing pains. We, because we're using our internet connection for backup, we overloaded the bandwidth, and so we had to get the high-bandwidth connection.
That was approved at the special meeting?
Yes.
Okay, great.
And we're, it's in use. We've also upgraded the wifi. There, there's going to be a public wifi available in the town hall as well, that's completely disjoint from the, the business wifi that the town has for its own business. So, it won't be a security problem, but it'll be a service that the residents of the...
Can we just make the town hall a hotspot?
Yeah, that's effectively what it would be.
Yeah, that's great. One question...
Although, a hotspot and town hall don't seem to go together, but, okay.
Well, maybe in your mind. The laser fish, Alan, do we have to wait for the intermunicipal agreement to be signed before we can give them the go-ahead?
No.
We can...
Well, we could do it for us, and then it'd be part of the implementation. I'm meeting with Jim Jeffries, who was on vacation this week, hopefully, and we'll...
Well, let me know. I'd love to, I'd love to attend, yeah.
Yeah, we'll get a detailed plan for the rest of it.
Thank you for all that work. It's great to get this up and going. I actually have a computer now, so.
Alan, should we rename this Oz?
Sure, whatever you want, you know. Just create a resolution, we'll vote on it.
Joe?
Well, let me just mention, for those who don't know, we signed a contract with the village for fire protection. And Elizabeth did a lot of work, Bruce certainly did a lot of work.
Yes, did you?
Alan got in it.
It's a group effort.
It was a group effort. We did have a workshop with the town board on workforce affordable housing. We made certain decisions, which will be presented to the full board. Decision was made by the board to go ahead and retain Ted Fink to do a SECA analysis that we will need. I've circulated some language to the committee to resolve the issue that was raised by the planning board chair, and once the committee signs off on that, I will run that and the changes since John Lyons last looked at it by him. So, hopefully, we'll have something to introduce at the next meeting, or the meeting after that, depends how fast I can get the professionals to move on this.
Thank you. You must be relieved that we're seeing some light.
Right, right. This is something that we were mandated to do at the end of 2009.
Thank you for all of your work in the committee. It was a good meeting, so, thank you. Anything further? Can we go on to our resolutions, or?
Yes.
I'm going to take them out of order. I'd like to go to resolution, it's number six. It's Resolution 214-298, the Hudson River Estuary Program Habitat Restoration, Bulkhead Habitat Enhancement Project at the Rhine Cliff Landing. We have Dan Miller here. Thank you for being so patient. It's tab number six. May I have a motion?
Motion.
And a second?
Second.
For the public, at our last meeting, Dan came and presented to us a, a state grant to place habitat boxes on our bulkhead, which effectively turns a marine desert into a living habitat, and we were grateful that he came to us. So, we're voting to implement this and accept the, the grant or the project. Any further discussion? Any comments?
I just have one question, Dan. You have looked at our resolution, and you're comfortable with it?
I had a chance to take a look at the last couple of lines after I walked in, but I have not had an opportunity to read the, the entire resolution.
Maybe we could give him the two pages, and call it back in five minutes. I just want to make sure he's comfortable with it.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
Thank you. I'll table this resolution, then. No, don't table it, I'm going to hold it, just move on, we'll come back to it. Resolution number, tab one, Resolution 2014-293, Preliminary Accounts Payable Abstracts 9, Vouchers 985 through 1,078, 63 checks totaling $119,767.05. May I have a motion?
Motion.
And a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? So, move. Resolution 214-294, our preliminary capital projects abstracts, one check for $2,863. May I have a motion?
Motion.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? So, moved. Resolution 214-295, they are our budget transfers and amendments. May I have a motion?
Motion.
And a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? So, moved. Resolution 2014-296, radio communication equipment leased for the highway department. May I have a motion?
Motion.
And a second?
Second.
Kathy, would you like to speak to us about this, or we can, you know, I think every...
Do you have any questions?
I have no questions. This is for, this is for our two-way radio contract for the highway department trucks. If there's any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? So, moved. Resolution 2014-297, for sale of our surplus highway department trucks and equipment by Seal Bid Auction. May I have a motion?
Motion.
And a second?
Second.
Any discussion? For the public, this is allowing us to bid out, we've discussed this before, our 1990 Ford F-8000, and our 2002 Ford F-450, a chainsaw, and some, a toolbox, miscellaneous stuff. Is there any discussion? Joe, did you have a question?
I just, I'm sure Kathy, you will send the bid information to the guy who bought, the company that bought the last two trucks.
We've had several interested parties contact us wanting information when these do go out for bid. Those are among, those are among them.
Great.
Any further discussion or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? So, moved. Dan, you ready? We're back to Resolution 2014-298 for the Hudson River Estuary Program Habitat Restoration.
Looks good to me.
Looks good. Thank you for reading it.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? So, moved. Thank you very much. We'll look forward to...
Thank you, we'll look forward to working with you.
Great.
Thanks, Dan. Resolution 2014-299, additional town aging van transportation service for senior citizens. May I have a motion?
Motion.
And a second?
Second.
Second.
Any discussion for the public? Elaine, you want to talk about this?
Sure.
Thank you.
We were asked by the chair of the Aging Committee if they could have... We were asked by the chair of the Aging Committee if they could have an extra day, one extra day per month to take the shuttle service to the local nursing homes. This is something they actually had written in their plan a few years back, when they talked about what they were looking for for the future. They knew they wanted to expand services. They have a volunteer now in place to be able to do that, so they're asking us for the third Monday of every month, so that's what this resolution is allowing them to have.
And the Aging Committee, there was a conflict. I was concerned it would place a lot of burden on the clerks-
Yes.
And we came up with a great solution. They are going to schedule the drivers, and the clerk's office will continue to schedule the rider pickups.
Yes, exactly.
So thank you for that.
Yes.
I think that's a great solution. Thank you to the clerk's office. Any further discussion?
I guess the only thing, the drivers, do we have to run that by the insurance company?
We do.
Okay, there-
Check them, we check the license, we put them on our insurance, that's, the clerks take care of that. So this is a great service, it'll be for-
Yeah, I just want to make sure-
Thank you.
That they ever got into an accident.
Now, who's the contact for volunteer drivers?
Well, you can call the clerk's office, or you can call, we'll publish it on our website, too. The Aging Committee is going to be scheduling the drivers, the clerk's office clears them, and once they're cleared-
I would say Marcia would be a good contact person. If anybody wants to volunteer, they could contact her. She's the chair of the Aging Committee.
Okay.
Yes, John?
I'll say that we could use some volunteer drivers for the existing service.
John's just asked for, we'll say now, if anybody's interested in driving, we desperately need more drivers for our senior vans, so please contact the clerk's office. Thank you. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? So moved. Coming to the end here. Resolution, Resolution 2014-300, increasing our town credit card limit to thirty-five hundred dollars. May I have a motion?
Motion.
And a second? For the public, we have a one thousand dollar limit on our credit card, we've been exceeding it, and when we exceed it, we get fined. The next resolution is to add EZ Pass for our highway department, which would add another eleven hundred dollars to the limit, so for cushion, we're seeking to raise the credit card limit to thirty-five hundred dollars. Is there any further discussion or questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? So moved. Resolution 2014-301, EZ Pass service for our town highway vehicles. May I have a motion?
Motion.
And a second?
Second.
Thank you. For the public, again, as we just discussed, we raised the credit level on our credit cards so we could accommodate this. We have, in part, a new contract for asphalt across the river. Trucks, many axles are very expensive. Superintendent's been very kind in laying out our personal money, but that needs to stop, so we're going to get some-
Cheaper, right?
Some EZ Pass for the highway department. Any questions or discussions? Kathy, you wanted to?
Yes, I just want to say the resolution says sealing on the account not to exceed eleven hundred dollars, but actually, what we've been quoted is eleven hundred and six dollars.
Six.
And I think that there, we need a little cushion in case we need to add something, so could I ask that to be amended to twelve hundred dollars?
I'd like to make a motion to amend Resolution 2014-301 to twelve hundred dollars.
I thought Joe would say eleven hundred six and twenty-five cents.
Don't give him ideas, Bruce.
I've got a motion, asking for a motion. May I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. So moved. Johnny, we're upping it to twelve.
Thank you.
Thanks, Kathy. Resolution 2014-302, request to Dutchess County to lower the speed limit on County Route 19, also known as Slate Quarry Road in Reinbeck. May I have a motion?
Motion.
And a second?
Second.
For the public, as we know, Slate Quarry Road in Reinbeck is one of the highest, has one of the highest accident rates in the county. In June, Kathy Kinsella, Henry Camel and myself met with Bob Balkin and the county head of the DOT to look at what we could do to deal with this, and we came up with a whole bunch of traffic calming signs, lowering the speed limit, and some resurfacing. While I was on vacation, Kathy met again with the county engineer to go over the signage proposal, it looks fantastic. This is another step that we have to do, which is to pass this resolution to ask the state to lower the speed limit. And we're asking them to lower it to forty-five miles an hour. It's done on traffic studies and an eighty-fifth percentile of what cars go, and we're thinking that this lowered limit, which will be in Reinbeck only, so it's just west of Ziffelberg to Route, to the, to Route 9, along with the calming signs and the resurfacing, will address what needs to be addressed on this road, the safety issues. So if we approve this, the county will recommend this, and we can take it to the state. Is there any further discussion or questions from the board or any members of the public?
Like I've said before, my son's an EMT, he goes there probably every week.
Sometimes twice on the same day?
Yeah, multiple times.
Yes.
It's the same spot, same fifty, a hundred yards.
Yes.
Same thing, they go too fast around the corner, so-
Especially after rain, it's brutal.
Right. So we need to do this.
This is part of our three-step, you know, the traffic calming signs, the resurfacing, and the lowering of the speed limit, and this is only in Reinbeck on Slate Quarry Road. Kathy, did you want to add anything? Okay, and thank you for meeting with him while I was on vacation. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? So moved. Thank you. Resolution 2014-303, dates for our 2014-2015 winter farmers market. May I have a motion?
Motion.
And a second?
Second.
I see that there are people from the farmers market here. We have a resolution in front of us asking for, it looks like twice a month, December, January, February, March, three in March and two in April. Any discussion?
Yeah, let me say, I'm surprised at the resolution. I was asked to clear the dates, and we cleared the dates. I think we do need a discussion of the winter farmers market here. At least one person has said that we find garbage outside the back door on Monday mornings, it's not taken away. There has been-
Can I just, I think that this resolution is about the dates. I mean, if we want to enter into a contract, do we usually enter into a contract with the farmers market?
Yes, we do a contract, and the dates would be part of it. So I think we really ought to discuss the whole thing, as, and time is growing short, because they have to know the parameters, and-
Are you looking to expand the resolution tonight, and hammer out an agreement, or reserve the dates, and then at the next meeting, you know, we can speak about some issues and address them at the next meeting, or?
Well, I think the dates have been set already, and they're fine. I think we should present to the board a draft contract that we agreed to, but I think we need some direction from the board as to what we should put in the contract, both with respect to fees and the overall question, are we willing to have the farmers market here? My own suggestion is that we charge one hundred and twenty-five dollars under the previous contract, plus two hundred dollars for a cleaning, waxing, and buffing of the floors. I think the two hundred dollars should be melded into the one twenty-five, increased by two hundred, because it will make the bookkeeping easier rather than a separate payment. But that's just a mechanical thing, and I assume the farmers market won't have any problem with that. Question is, do we, first question is, do we want winter farmers market here? Second question is, what should the charge be? Third question, I would put something in the contract about making sure the garbage gets taken away after the Sunday sessions. I think those are the three questions. I think we need a board decision on that, then I would prepare a draft contract for the farmers market if we want to go ahead and present it to the board at the next meeting.
Thoughts, anybody? I have thoughts, I'll see if anyone wants to go first.
I'm a big fan of the farmers market. I do have concerns about the appropriateness of this space for the farmers market. Does the farmers market have plans on seeking another space? Do you want to be here for the rest of your lives? What are we looking at? I shop here all the time, I support it, I believe that it's very hard on the floors, the paint job, the stairs. When we come in on Mondays after, we find, you know, vegetable debris out in the back there. Other than that, it's lovely to have you and lovely to come, but it's hard on the physical space.
Hi, I'm Ken Miglerelli, the president. I was, I'm unaware of the garbage left from Monday. I know there was one issue on one occasion, and we made sure that that was rectified, but was that an ongoing thing?
Yes, it was ongoing, frequently. I'm here every day, and frequently, if not every Monday after the farmers market, especially in the winter, we'd come out and there'd be snow with vegetables on top of it or food just out the back door. It's mostly out there, not in the front.
Oh, this is the first I'm hearing of it, and I'll make sure that that's resolved.
Thank you.
Because we have a site manager who makes sure the place is cleaned up and looking as it was when we arrived. As far as the fees, that doesn't sound like it's going to be a problem. And what was it last year as opposed to the increase?
It was one hundred and twenty-five per session, and plus two hundred-
For the cleaning.
To clean.
And whack. So you're just going to take the two hundred and meld it into the one twenty-five?
I would, unless the board decides they want to go up from that fee structure.
I don't know that the fees are the issue so much as the long-term plan for the farmers market. I have, as I said, just, you know, we have, I think the paint job gets a little battered up and-
Okay.
Which we're, you know, but it's a public space, so-
Right. I mean, it's a great space, I got to say, you know, the tall ceilings, and it's just the ambiance of the market during the winter time. It's actually really nice. And I think customers enjoy the proximity to the, to the village, where they can go in and get breakfast or lunch, and it's right here. But we have discussed other locations for the future, and they would probably be like outside the village boundary, which, I don't know if that would be good or bad, but we have, we're looking into other locations, we haven't had anything set in stone, but, you know, if we could definitely have it for one more season and then, you know-
So you are looking to maybe do expand?
We've had discussions in our meetings, and, but it's, it's kind of difficult, you know, it's been talked possibly at a fair, but we felt that that would be too far away. I know the rec center was looking to, you know, we had discussion about something that I want-
If we could get permission to build something there, that would be great.
Right, and to figure out, and then there's actually another location that just came about, and I've been looking into that, but I'm not sure where it's going to, I have to have a meeting with my board before we make a decision, but we are looking.
Okay.
I think you once said, or maybe I'm wrong, that you've looked at the American Legion space, that hasn't been-
I don't know, we have our annual dinner slash meeting there.
Okay.
Right? No.
It's not figured out.
No, okay, okay. Because we're also thinking maybe an all-year thing at another location, because there is issues with some parking at the outdoor markets, so we are considering other options.
If we could assist, you know, we would love to. And thank you for being sensitive in the every, I know you'd prefer every week. We have neighbors who in the past, you know, so thank you for your sensitivity for that.
Yeah.
And I spoke to the neighbors who, and they're very thankful, too, so I talked to them this week.
Okay. Any other questions?
No. Anybody concerns, questions, issues?
I would like to vote on the resolution we had before, so approving the days, and then we can, you know, have a contract if that's okay.
Right, but let's just decide, should we keep the fee the same, the one twenty-five plus the melding in? I kind of think if we went up twenty-five dollars, it's probably meaningless, so maybe we should just keep the fee the way it is for another year.
Keep inflation down.
What?
Keep the inflation down.
Let's record this one.
At least I didn't talk about a berm.
That's true, and a boat.
There's still time, there's still time. A couple items left.
So are we agreeable to keep the fee the same, just melding in?
We're going to vote on this now?
Well-
We have a resolution in front of us to approve dates for the 2014-2015 winter farmers market, and we're discussing what the next resolution should contain. I think I'm fine with it, but can you make it an even number, just round it up so that, you know, when you-
Okay, I'll do the math, and if I can't divide two hundred into those number of days, I'll ask Alan to-
Yeah, I can help.
Alan can do it, he went to MIT. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? So moved. Thank you.
Eleven days.
Should I send the draft contract to you, or who should I send it to?
Send it to our post office.
Okay, but I can't email it to a post office box.
You want to email it.
Well-
Well, you could email it to me.
Yeah, if you could just send me your email address, that would be great.
All right, well, Cheryl emailed you the dates, so I have your email.
Okay, great.
So I'll, so-
Hundred twenty-five plus two hundred per-
Thanks.
No, for the season, so it's a number of days.
Resolution 2014-304.
Dollars a week.
It's a three-month telephone service contract with Manchester Communications. I'll make a motion, may I have a second?
Second.
So, we're moving on here. We, at our last meeting in August, we approved a new telephone system. We neglected to approve the service contract, so here it is. Any, any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? So moved. Aye, I'm in favor also. Resolution 2014-305, accepting a bid for repair and resurfacing of the rec park tennis and basketball courts. I'll make a motion, may I have a second? No second motion?
Second.
I think we should-
I thought Alan was going, I was waiting for you to say it, that's usually how happens.
I think we should table this as part of the broader discussion and-
Well, just hold on, I've got an open motion here. Is there any discussion or any questions?
I have a question. Wouldn't this be better done in the spring?
Here's the issue. We believe that there's infrastructure issues, and if they're not dealt with, we'll have to, we'll have more damage to deal with. We could be wrong, we could be right. It's the basketball court seems to be in more need than the tennis courts. Bruce, do you want to speak to this, since this is your purview?
Yeah, the basketball court was resurfaced in 2008. It's currently chipped, and people drag their shoe and they get caught in the little things, and they trip. The tennis courts, as I understand it, has lost its grit, so it's become slippery, and if it rains or the humidity's up, it becomes more slippery than it should. There's cracks in it, and as you know, water gets into the cracks and freezes. I guess my only issue with this was the warranties. I didn't see any warranties with these, and I wouldn't, my previous experience with this, I wouldn't do it without a warranty.
And just out of curiosity, why couldn't it wait till spring if it's the-
It could wait till spring. There's absolutely no reason why, other than the cracks.
There could be more heave and infrastructure damage over the winter if we don't deal with it now. So we risk, if we don't do it now, what we risk is instead of a thirty-three thousand
So we risk, if we don't do it now, what we risk is instead of a $33,000 fix, we risk a whole new, dig it up and redo it. Can we look into the warranty and bring this back next week? Is that...
It's not mine. I didn't bring it forward, so...
John, would you...
Where did this come from?
Our building, our maintenance, and, I don't know. I talked to Bob about it and Bruce.
Before it comes back, though, I think we really ought to check the references of the various...
Koflin Coating Company does bard tennis, bard, and they seem to be highly recommended.
Yeah, they've got references.
Yes.
With the bids, because you asked where it came from, were the bids authorized, the solicitation of the bids, these public contracts, $10,000? Did the board previously authorize the solicitation of the bids?
Yes.
Oh, so then that's right.
Yes.
Thank you.
Let's table this until our next meeting, when we reach out to all three companies. I believe one company has given us a warranty. Let's reach out to the others who haven't, and we'll bring it back either at our next meeting.
Are the current courts asphalt?
Yeah.
Yes?
Yes.
Are true or asphalt?
Kathy, you ought to weigh in on it. You were...
You're not, it's not a road.
I don't mean now, but...
It's a whole different...
It's not a road. It's a tennis surface.
Oh, asphalt is not asphalt?
No, it's very, it's the fine stuff.
Okay. We're going to table this then until our next meeting. Could you, yes, could you please come on up?
I'm just going to say, you know, another place to contact might be Marist College.
Could you introduce yourself?
Steve Sansol.
Hi, Steve.
Hi. For what it's worth, Marist has a series of tennis courts, and they're quite good. I don't know if, you know, you wanted to contact someone. I have a contact for you if you wanted to, just to get an idea of who we work with and to get a sense of the cost.
You would do that?
Sure. I mean, I can make the call on behalf of the town.
That'd be great.
I'll do that, and I'll call the town clerk.
Yeah, email the town clerk the information.
I'll take care of that for you.
Thank you, Steve.
Thank you.
Can I just ask something? Joe, just wanted to point out and answer your question. None of these three companies that bid are traditional asphalt, like road asphalt.
Kathy, could you, could you come up? You want to come up just a second?
You should sit in the front row.
I know. I never liked the front. Thank you. I just wanted to point out that the three companies that responded and bid are not, you know, traditional road asphalt companies. They're all sports-related companies. It is an area of expertise, so they're, it's not apples to apples. I just wanted to clarify that.
Thank you. Resolution 2014-306, waiver of operating permit fee for the Ryan Cliff Fire Department chili cook-off. I'll make a motion. May I have a second?
Second.
Third.
Any discussion? I have some discussion, I'll just let you know. When this was on the agenda, I got a phone call from a member of the public who asked if it was legal to waive fees. So I pulled up our law, and I called Warren. We have nothing in our local law allowing us to levy fees that allows us to waive fees. So I leave that with you in deciding if we're going to waive the fee.
We have nothing to let us levy.
Warren said unless we have something in our, the phrasing of our reso or our local law allowing us to levy these fees that allows us to waive them, that we probably shouldn't waive a fee.
But don't we traditionally do this? My understanding was this is fairly routine.
Well, traditionally doesn't mean proper. So if you haven't looked into it, you're breaking, you know, if we, if we waive it for one other taxing entity, then do we waive it for everybody? Do we waive it for the library? Do we waive it for the Lions Club? You know, I spoke to another supervisor about it, who said their policy is just to always do it because they're looking at, you know, at the end of a year, $2,000, $3,000, $4,000 in fees that they'd be waiving for community organizations, so...
Lions Club is not a governmental unit. I had told Elizabeth, when we put the solar panels on this building, we needed a building permit from the village. And they gave us the permit, but they waived the fee.
The park is paid every fee, every application.
Thompson Mazzarella Park has to pay their...
Paid our own planning board.
Exactly. We also, within departments, charge departments for other, the highway department does work for the building department or the senior committee, they charge. We do interdepartmental charges. So I just, you know, it seems very small-minded, but we, you know, are supposed to be upholding our own law, so...
We wouldn't want to give them a community development grant of 50 bucks, would we?
Bruce, I did think about this when Elizabeth posed the question to me. And I do remember the Thompson Mazzarella discussion about fees. And at least I was under the impression at that point that that is a project that would not be asking for government money, that they would raise their own money. And I think that was part of the discussion by the previous board as to why we did not waive fees for Thompson Mazzarella.
So I didn't understand that. I didn't, the government was raising their own money, so they don't, they have to pay fees?
No, that Thompson Mazzarella Park was not a governmental funding source that...
Neither is the fire department. The fire department isn't a...
That may be. I'm just saying Bruce has talked about Thompson Mazzarella. And I do remember we decided as a board, and it was a previous board, that Thompson Mazzarella should pay the normal fees. I'm just responding to...
Yeah, we decided that as a board, that we should do that.
Yes.
And, but it is us. It's not a separate entity.
It's our money.
It's our money. We're just paying ourselves.
Well, at least I, as a board member at that point, was under the impression that Thompson Mazzarella would be funded outside town resources.
Yeah, okay. So this is, this is going to go...
This is another, this is another issue for another day. So what we're talking about here is waiving a fee. And is there any further discussion?
Well, there, I mean, I kind of feel like they're, it's not, they're all volunteer, right? And they do this as a community service. I mean, people come there and eat the chili for nothing, and I don't know. I mean, I feel like waiving $50 is not, I mean, so what? It's like for what they're providing to the community, and they all volunteer their time to do it.
And we have waived it in the past.
Yeah, and it has been waived in the past. I think we should waive it for them. I think it's a very small thing.
It's not the amount. It's the, you know, do we want to set precedent for waiving fees when we don't have it in our law to do it? So I brought it to you guys to vote, and it's a board decision. Any further discussion? All in favor?
What are we voting in favor of?
Of waiving the fee.
Waiving the fee.
Oh, waiving the fee, okay. Yeah, all in favor? Aye.
I'm going to abstain. It passes, so moved. Resolution 2014-307, loan from part-town fund to special fire protection district fund for village fire contract.
Motion.
Second?
Second.
Okay. For the public, this is cleanup that we do so that we could pay our last bill. We've agreed on a new contract price.
Right.
We looked it over. We're fine.
Right. This brings us to having the funds to pay the $160,000 for fire protection for 2014.
Right. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? So moved. That's it for our resolutions. Is there any new business, any discussion items, or is there any public comment on any non-agenda items? I have a request for an executive session. I'd like to move that we go into executive session to discuss the employment history of a particular person.
Okay.
May I have a motion?
Motion.
And a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? So moved. Thank you. We'll be back. Okay. Good evening, everybody. We're back from our executive session. I'd like to make a motion to adjourn our meeting.
Motion.
May I have a second? Motion, any, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion approved. Good night. Thank you.
Good night.